Do we need these?
Yeah, I come out there every day. I put my dog on the paddle horn and we just go. And here. Yeah. We have an island right in front, so there's a cut between the island and the last paddle through.
And we don't. Yeah, it's not doing anything.
No one. It's not buying, so.
I don't know.
Shut that door. Pretty noisy out here. Well, the thing does not have a knob on it, her microphone. We can go. Ready? Good afternoon. It's 5:34 PM and I call the City of Danell and Planning Commission meeting to order July 18th, 2023. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of America, to the citizens of this nation. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. May we have roll call?
Commissioner Sheffield.
Here.
Commissioner Walters. Chairwoman Darville.
Here.
And Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Martian.
Here.
And Kelly Wyon is here. There are no council members present.
And proof of publication, please.
The agenda was posted on this City Hall website and City Bulletin Board on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023.
Thank you. And we will skip public comment as we have no public in attendance. And item number one is the approval of the minutes from August 3rd. As amended, so have you had a chance to review that? And if you would share why the amendment, please?
The August 3rd, 2022 minutes were amended as a result of last month's meeting. Incorrectly reflecting Dusty Walters as being absent.
Last month or last year?
The August 3rd, 2022, 2022 meeting minutes were revised as a result of last month's meeting when you told me that you were noted as absent.
So please let me know when you've had a chance to review. Lisa? You're okay? Okay. And. Review? Okay, I think we've all had a chance to review. Do I have a motion to accept the August 3rd, 2022 minutes as amended?
I know that we. That the 2022. Prove a minute.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes at the minutes from August 3rd, 2022 amended. Be approved and accepted. Listed on here is the October 18th, 22 and June 2023 and I. We were told that they're not quite ready for review. Is that correct?
That is correct. They have not been proofed for publication.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that being put aside, it looks like we will can begin seeing we have three more modules. Are these the last of the three for our training section?
They are the last of the three. Yes.
Let's get started. Yeah, whatever you. Yeah, we did this. I just want to make sure we're getting things sound and we're not. All right. Care with me just a moment. Thank you. And there's some guidelines for being ethical commissioners. You have your local ethics ordinances with your cities or your county. Well, I certainly want you to be ethical commissioners and there's some guy. Guidelines for being ethical commissioners. You have your local ethics ordinances with your city. Cities or your county that tell you what. Well, I certainly want you to be ethical commissioner. Well, I certainly want you to be ethical commissioners and there's some guidelines for being ethical commissioners. You have your local ethics ordinances with your cities or your county that tell you what. What is prohibited conduct. That you don't really solicit or accept gifts. You don't want to misuse your position. You don't want to go and say, well, I'm the planning commission for so and so, and I need this very special information. That's kind of misusing your position. Your conflicts of interest, as we mentioned earlier, generally financial. You own property near the case or you you're handle investments for the owner. You need to be very careful. And always check with your staff to see if they if these or the city attorney to see if these conflicts of interest would require you to not participate in that case. Expartated communications are those that are held outside of the meeting. All your conversations really as a planning and zoning commissioner should be in your regular meeting. Don't have serial meetings. Those are generally attended by less than a quorum. You don't discuss planning and zoning cases in private. You really shouldn't meet with other planning commissioners and discuss it because you want everybody to hear the same thing at the same time in public meeting. And if you do have a conflict of interest, there are usually forms provided by the city. It doesn't have to be very detailed. It just says you have a conflict of interest, financial or you your your son owns the property next door or some things like that that you shouldn't be participating in the meeting. Now, American Planning Association provides ethical principles in planning and it's very detailed. This was developed in in the 19, late 1980s as part of just general ethics for planning because of it was a follow-up from public request or people who were not going to be AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners, planning. So this was developed and it correlates with what your responsibilities are. So the first part of this ethical principles in planning is to serve the public interest. And you need to recognize that everybody has the right to participate. Even that guy that comes every week and you don't get really tired of hearing him, he still has the right to to come and talk. But you have a within your meeting organization, you should have a way for to hear the public. You want to give clear, full and accurate information. That's why one reason to keep everything in meetings. When you meet somebody in the grocery store, you really should give them the process and encourage that they come to the meeting. Not try to tell them how you're going to vote or make them try to think you know that you're going to vote the way they want you to. It's really important to have these meetings where everybody has the opportunity to come. Sometimes meetings are held when people are at work and they can't be there. And sometimes it means moving your meeting time for to so that more people can be involved. You're still looking at those clarifications of the community goals that were established in the in the comprehensive plan. But you want to ensure all the information available to you is available to the public. If somebody's asking you for that information, you give them the process and you can refer them to staff if there's additional information. You want to protect the integrity of the natural environment. Sometimes somebody wants to cut down all the trees. You want to be sure that these things are taken into consideration as well as as historic properties that may be threatened by new development. But it's really important that you look at the interrelatedness of the decisions. If you make a decision on this piece of property or you recommend a decision on this piece of property, you need to look at what the long-term consequences are. What's going to happen later if you make this present action or make this present recommendation? So with part B, I told you this went on for a while. You want to use that your independent judgment. You don't just go along with everybody. It's all right to not have a unanimous recommendation. You have to disclose any personal interest you have. That's the the conflicts of interest. You want to be sure you're not having a conflict of interest. You can define that personal interest rather broadly. But you don't participate in a matter of which you have that personal interest. And you really should leave the room where the meeting's being held while that case or that matter is being discussed. Do not accept gifts or favors or offer any. Don't promise anybody you'll vote the way they would like you to vote. And you need to not be an advisor on any plan in which you previously participated as an advocate. Sometimes when you've been a neighborhood planner, you need to be careful that you still participate in any decision for that neighborhood as the committee of a whole. So it's okay to sometimes serve as that advocate, but be sure it's legal and I would discuss that with staff. Don't use any comfort confidential information. Don't disclose any confidential. But be really sure that you don't misrepresent the facts or distort the information. And it's really important that you not participate actively unless you're really prepared, unless you read the material and ask the questions. And you need to understand that your fellow commissioners, your city council member and the public that attend these meetings all have their rights to be that need to be respected.
Well, thank you. I'm Michael Blue and we're here with Greg Jones of the law firm of Ansel Glink and we're going to talk about the legal aspects of decision-making related to plan commissioners. So Greg, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me, Michael.
So let's start with just that. What are the legal implications of a plan commission? What are the legal implications of a plan commission recommendation? How cautious do they have to be? Do they need to pay attention to any legal precedent? Or start us off with that.
Sure. Well, at its heart, a plan commission is supposed to conduct a thorough public vetting of a development proposal or anything that comes before it and make a recommendation to the city council or the village board, whichever municipality it may be. So the recommendation matters, and the conduct of the hearing matters because, in theory, the facts and testimony provided at the hearing will provide the basis for the plan commission's recommendation. Plan commission needs to allow as many people or interested parties to speak at the public hearing as possible because you want to make sure you have a well-rounded, full body of evidence to make a recommendation on. And village boards and city councils tend to pay attention to plan commissioners. The mayor appoints a plan commissioner, and they're typically confirmed by the city council. So they've placed trust in them. There's an expectation that they will go ahead and do their job thoroughly and diligently. So the recommendation absolutely matters.
Okay. But for the commission, they don't have to worry too much about the city getting sued, if they're doing their job, if they're going through the process correctly, and ultimately there's an elected body behind them that's making the final decision?
That's right. The commission needs to stay focused on the standards for approval for the request in front of it. So what does that mean? If there's a variance request, the zoning code will have specific standards that the plan commission should consider when determining whether to support or recommend denial of a variance. There's different standards for a special use. Planned unit developments typically have much longer standards because it's a more involved process. So as long as the plan commission views the testimony that's provided at the hearing through the lens of those standards to determine whether or not the applicant is meeting those standards, the city's pretty well protected from a lawsuit.
One of the questions we get a lot from commissions and commissioners in the work we do is they're always worried about setting a precedent. So if we allow this variation or approve that special use, haven't we set a precedent that allows the next one to come through that maybe we don't like, we can't say no to it? Tell us a little bit about precedent.
There's a lot of misconception around the concept of setting a precedent. The short answer is if you approve a fence variance for Joe Jackson, you're not required to go ahead and approve the next fence variance that comes in for Sally Smith. Each request should be evaluated on its own merits, its own facts, and its own circumstances. So we'll take Joe Jackson's fence variance request. Say he comes in and asks to build an eight-foot fence in a zoning district where only six-foot fences are allowed. Maybe that eight-foot fence is warranted because there's a drive-through on the property next door, or there's an alley next door, or there's a dog kennel next door. Now, when Sally Smith comes in, her house backs up to another residential property. So there's differences, factual differences between the two cases. So the way that a plan commission can really protect itself from arguments of, well, you approved Joe's variance, you have to approve Sally's variance, is to focus and drill down on the facts. If you focus on the facts and testimony presented at the hearing, it should become apparent that there are differences between the two. Now, that's the legal answer. It's difficult to set a precedent by approving one variance. There's also the public perception or political angle as well. Now, the public is not necessarily going to understand the nuance between the two variance requests. And this also reemphasizes the importance of making sure you clearly state on the record why you're supporting the variance, what those facts are. That way, when someone comes in later, you can say, yes, but you're not located next to a kennel or a drive-through or an alley that has a lot of traffic.
Okay, that's great. We talk a lot about findings of fact as part of the deliberation. First of all, what are they? And second of all, why are they important?
Findings of fact are, it's an analysis of the testimony and facts presented at the hearing. So it's all the reasons why, or in some cases, why not, a proposal meets the zoning standards in the ordinance. It's important to note that the findings of fact need to be based only on the testimony provided at the hearing or the meeting. You're not supposed to take into account any outside factors that haven't been presented on the record. So they're important because it shows that the plan commission's doing its job, and it's considering the appropriate legal factors when it makes its recommendation. So the plan commissioners, again, this is going to be a common theme that runs throughout our talk, they need to be familiar with the standards, and they need to view all testimony that's provided at the hearing through those standards. And it's pretty common for commissioners to actually have the standards written down on a dais next to them. And that's part of having a quality staff report as well.
And in terms of those findings of fact, they ultimately become part of the record. They ultimately find their way to the elected body that's making the decision. Who writes them? Staff, secretary, chair of the commission, somebody randomly selected from the commission?
It varies. And a lot of it depends on the capacity of the municipality, both in terms of how much staff support they have and things of that nature. So there's three common approaches. First, it's a really good idea to have the applicant submit draft findings of fact with his application. The applicant, at the end of the day, is the one asking for approval. He's asking for relief. Have him make his case in writing. And that serves a couple of purposes. First, it'll provide the commission with a general idea of what findings of fact may be if they wanted to support the case. And two, it'll help get the applicant in the right mindset before the hearing because it's basically his presentation or his argument written down, which is good. It'll make for a more fruitful hearing. It'll get him focused on those standards as well. Alternately, the commission can draft its own findings. That can happen during the meeting. Certainly work with clients that have worksheets, basically, that have, here's standard number one, and there's five or six lines below it. And the commission, after the public hearing is closed, still during an open meeting, will discuss what facts and what testimony presented at the hearing satisfy that factor. And they'll walk through all of them. And that's a little bit more labor-intensive. It can make the meeting a bit longer, but on the other hand, it also helps show the public how the sausage is made, so to speak. It's very transparent. It's very apparent what the commission is doing. There's no activity behind closed doors. Or alternately, if it's a community with more resources, you can have staff prepare findings, either draft findings prior to the hearing or findings based on the testimony after the hearing. So there's no one right way to do it. If you have staff, they're typically, the professionals, the experts, it's great to rely on them. We certainly recognize that not every community has a professional planner on staff.
But those findings written around those standards, those are really kind of the heart of the evaluation or the testimony process, aren't they?
They absolutely are. And they'll be forwarded on to the city council for their consideration prior to the vote. Certainly, if you end up in court, the findings made by the plan commission are a consideration. So it's important, and you should take time with them.
So you mentioned, we talked about that there are standards that these findings of fact address, and that sometimes there's more of them. They're generally similar, and they're not the same in every community, but sometimes, you said there's a lot of them. For a planned unit development, there might be more of them. Does the application have to meet all of these standards or just most of them?
The application needs to meet the standards. It's not one out of three or two out of three. It's not more than not. It's clear that the application needs to address each standard. So that's part of the burden that applicants carry, and that's why they need to carefully consider the application they're bringing forth and whether or not they can state a claim and substantiate support for that proposal.
Aren't some of those standards written where there's some room for interpretation? I mean, those standards are not, is the building six feet tall? The standards talk about there's adequate facilities or there's adequate capacity, and there may be something about impact or trend of development. Those might be kind of fuzzy things. Is that true? And what if you can make a case the other way?
Yeah, there's absolutely room for argument, and that's why we have attorneys. They're not yes or no answers in many cases. It's a lot of analysis based on the facts and circumstances related to the property, which is what this is supposed to be about. It's a hearing about what's going on on the property.
So with that in mind, what should a commissioner keep in mind to be sure that as they're either asking questions or making their comments or deliberating amongst themselves, what should the commissioners keep in mind so that they're making a good case, that they're helping form those findings of fact, all those standards?
Well, first, and this is probably one of the more difficult things for commissioners to do, is you need to be able to discern between relevant testimony and facts and what we'll call all the other noise. Some of it's obvious. Personal attacks obviously have no place at a public hearing, but there are a lot of other things that fall into a gray area where the commission, especially if it's not a particularly experienced one, may place a false emphasis on it. So an example of this, I participated in a hearing where there was a drugstore that wanted to move into a neighborhood that was adjacent to a park, and it was predominantly a single-family residential area around there. There was a member of the public who stood up and testified, and she had, through the Freedom of Information Act, obtained copies of police reports for a drugstore located in a different community, not even the same drugstore. And she proceeded to read pages and pages, and this was years of police reports, talking about how children were going to be kidnapped out of the parking lot of this drugstore, and how rapists and pedophiles tended to frequent pharmacy parking lots. That's not relevant. That's totally irrelevant. And it's important for the plan commission to recognize that. And that also emphasizes the importance of having a chair that has a pretty strong handle on meeting conduct because, in that case, she was gavelled quiet and said, listen, if you have testimony that relates to the factors that the plan commission is required to consider, please provide that, but recognize that what you're talking about right now is not necessarily relevant. So the best advice really is to be familiar with those standards and view the testimony through the lens of those.
You mentioned gavelling a resident who's making a comment. And in terms of taking testimony and how much testimony and cutting off testimony, is there a legal answer to the question of how much testimony is enough? How much is too much? When can you cut people off? Should you cut people off?
Generally err on the side of providing more testimony. It's painful. It can make for some long nights. You're going to see your family less, but that's your job. The city council has the ability to curtail public comment largely out of necessity. They're governing the entire municipality. The plan commission's purpose is different. They're there to take testimony. They're there to listen to a wide range of claims, some more relevant than others, some clearly irrelevant, they don't have to listen to those. But if there's a degree of relevancy in what is being presented, the plan commission's obligated to listen. And that serves the purpose of making sure they're doing a thorough job evaluating each proposal and giving it the time that it deserves. And it also protects the community, the city, from lawsuits in the future, that someone's due process rights were cut off. Folks have a right to be heard. That's why we have public notice requirements. That's why we have open meetings, and that's kind of the bedrock principle of democratic government.
Okay, that's great. So that's just part of the process.
Yes.
In terms of the operations of a commission or a plan commission, I know a lot of them have got their own bylaws, their own sort of rules and procedures. Is that a requirement? Do they have to have those? And if they don't, is it a good idea to have them?
It's a good idea to have them. And laws can vary, do vary, I should say, from state to state. The bylaws are important because it's really the playbook for how the plan commission is supposed to function. So it talks about membership. It talks about obligation to attend meetings. It talks about conduct of meetings. A variant of Robert's Rules of Order is commonly used by a lot of plan commissions, but you don't have to use Robert's Rules of Order wholesale. You can make changes. It's really a good idea because Robert's Rules of Order is really intended to govern deliberative bodies that are in constant session. And plan commissions aren't. They hold a meeting once or twice a month, and they're done. So the bylaws establish the ground rules. They can establish limits, within reason, on public comment as well. So if the situation comes up where the plan commission needs to limit public comment, and there are bylaws that have been adopted by the community, that's a stronger legal position if you ever need to defend it.
It sounds to me like a lot of these rules, a lot of this structure, really is ultimately to the benefit of the commission so that if you have a bylaw rule that says, we're going to try and end the meeting by 11 o'clock, or we're not going to start a new case after a certain time, and that you've got to stick with these findings of fact and consider those, that this structure can really be very helpful to the staff and the commission in managing what can be an emotional situation.
That's exactly right. It's the rules of the road, and it establishes expectations. And to your comment about ending meetings at a certain time, we've all been in situations where we've sat through the small hours of the morning, listening to deliberations from commissioners who've been on the dais for five, six, seven, eight hours. And it's hard to make good decisions when you've been sitting up there and it's 2:00 in the morning.
From a legal perspective, you might not make the best decision.
I would agree with that.
So the motion, the way motions are made, a lot of times you see commissioners get a little bit hung up in how they do this. One of the key understandings, though, is that motions are always supposed to be made in the affirmative. Is that right? And tell us why.
Yeah, that's correct. And an example will help highlight why or how this can go wrong, because it can go very wrong. So imagine you've got a controversial land use proposal. Say it's a glue factory. It's loud, it's noisy, it smells, and they want to locate next to a park in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So basically, the least consistent land use you can imagine with children playing in the property next door in the backyard. And at some point during the hearing, it becomes very apparent that everyone in the audience is opposed to this other than the applicant. And one of the commissioners is just fed up, and a moment of passion says, you know what? I'm going to make a motion that we deny this proposal. So, and the motion's seconded. So the motion on the floor is now a motion to deny. So it's in the negative. So the roll is called, and everyone starts voting. Those voting yes on that motion are voting to kill the proposal. Those voting no on that motion are voting to support it. Now, take a step back. Think about a referendum question, or anytime you step into the ballot box. It says, Michael, do you support a tax increase to pay for constructing a new village hall? Your yes vote means yes. In the circumstance of this plan commission that just stated a negative motion, your yes vote would mean no. So that's confusing. And it also confuses the folks in the audience who are sitting there watching an entire dais of people vote yes to kill a project. And this goes on. It's not just an immediate concern because the meeting minutes, from a legal perspective, when something goes wrong and there is a lawsuit later, the minutes are very important. It's frequently the only copy of the record, what happened at the hearing. And the minutes can be very confusing when it says, motion to deny, and it says, who voted yes? And you've got yeses, and you've got no's. We've seen circumstances, too, where you've had a negative motion stated, and a commissioner has realized after the fact, either at that meeting or a subsequent meeting, saying, hey, I meant to vote the other way. So then you've got another procedural hurdle, and it not only confuses the plan commission, it makes the community look bad and disorganized in certain respects. You want to come across as looking professional. So all of this is easily dispatched by just stating motions in the positive. So even if you hate the glue factory, you make a motion to approve the glue factory and let everybody vote no.
All said, okay. That glue factory, now, let's take something that could get approved, may have some conditions placed on it as part of the approval. And what we see is that sometimes conditions are things that get talked about. So one of the commissioners might say, we need better landscaping over there. But that's not part of the motion. It's not part of the approval. It might be in the minutes, but ultimately, that notion of, hey, we need more landscaping, that's not really binding. It's only binding if it's done how.
If you want it to be binding, it needs to be in the motion. And it will only be binding if the village board adopts an ordinance that expressly includes that condition. So if you feel strongly as a commissioner about a specific item, whether it's landscaping or the color of the building or signage or what have you, your motion to approve the development should state, I make a motion to approve the development subject to Bob the builder painting his building purple. Otherwise, it's not legally enforceable. Otherwise, the public who attended the meeting and heard the commissioner speak about the purple building will likely think that the building's supposed to be purple and will probably end up calling the little hall when it ends up being painted yellow.
I think a lot of planners have been in a situation where a meeting had to be changed or rescheduled or a case removed because public notice was not properly made. So there are these legal terms that we hear a lot. We hear about public notice and open meetings, and they seem to just be very controlling in what goes on. Can you explain those concepts a little and why it really is important to pay attention to those?
Sure. This is, the public process is quite possibly the most important component of the entire zoning review. Government's credibility is largely reliant on how responsive and accountable it is to the public. And the zoning process in Illinois and elsewhere requires open public hearings to be conducted for zoning proposals. This provides the public an opportunity to come out and express either their support or dissatisfaction with the proposal, and it allows a full record to be built. Without a public process, you get a lot of palace intrigue, frankly. Like, there was a meeting behind closed doors, smoke-filled or not, and these decisions were made, and I didn't have an opportunity to speak. And that really contradicts what the basic principles of responsible government are. So in order to build credibility in government, in order to... So in order to build credibility in government, in order to lend credibility to the decision that will ultimately be made by the City Council, you need to have a big tent process where everyone's invited in and folks can come out and share their views about it.
So I want to turn a little bit to the legal elements of being a commissioner, things that the commissioners have to know. What kind of ethics rules are there that are bindings, that are binding on commissioners?
Well, the ethics rules, that's a good question. And the ethics rules vary from state to state, but there's some certain common elements that run throughout them. For example, Illinois has what's commonly known as the Gift Ban Act. And it, as the name implies, prohibits commissioners from accepting gifts from prohibited sources. Now, I'm not going to sit here and lecture you on the specifics of the law and all of the elements, because we don't have time and you don't have patience. But the, a lot of this is common sense. So an example, if you're a commissioner and someone who is before the commission, whether it's a developer or your neighbor who wants to get a variance to reduce his side yard setback, offers to buy you a new car, or, you know, something expensive, or something, anything really significant, and that seems out of the ordinary, you should probably think about it. So there's a couple important things to know here. A, acknowledge that there are laws that govern conduct for Plan Commissioners. The typical Plan Commissioner's not going to spend time digging through statute books to understand what each of those laws are. But just know they're out there and exercise some common sense. B, as a commissioner, you're not an island unto yourself. You have a support network. Typically, there's staff. Typically, there's an attorney. If you find yourself in a situation where you don't feel comfortable, or something doesn't smell right, talk to staff. Talk to the attorney, and they'll provide you with counsel through it. It can be a little bit awkward in the moment when somebody offers you something and you say, "Hey, you know what? I really appreciate it, but, you know, I don't know if this is appropriate. I'm going to talk with staff. Let me get back to you." That's typically all it takes. And it can keep you out of trouble, and it can keep the community out of trouble, too. Because what you really want to avoid is the specter of impropriety, because that can taint both the proceedings that are before the Plan Commission, whether it's a specific development proposal, and it can also implicate just the credibility of government in general. There's a lot of folks out there who think that government's on the take, and that's not the case in the vast majority of circumstances. But proceeding cautiously, understanding that there are laws that implicate your conduct, and realizing that you have resources that you can rely on, will get you a long way.
Kind of related to that is the notion of a conflict of interest. So a lot of times you hear commissioners talk about, well, they have a conflict, or do they have a conflict? And sometimes they recuse themselves from a matter. So can you tell us what constitutes a conflict of interest and when somebody should recuse themselves?
Sure, sure. The term "conflict of interest" gets bandied about, particularly in the public, more than it should. But there are situations where there are legitimate conflicts of interest, and commissioners should be aware of those situations. First, and an example will probably be most helpful here, because the conflict statutes do vary from state to state. But take, for example, a Plan Commissioner who owns a property that's located next to a car dealer, luxury car dealer, big, beautiful cars. And the car dealer approaches the Plan Commissioner and says, "Hey, we're thinking about expanding our dealership. We're going to sell even more cars. This is great for the town, increase tax revenue. Everybody's going to be happy. We think you're going to love our beautiful dealership. There's glass windows and everything else." The Commissioner says, "Yeah, you know, that sounds great." So they enter into a purchase and sale agreement that's contingent on getting zoning approval. The developer then comes before the Plan Commission and asks for his rezoning in order to build his new dealership. The Plan Commissioner's sitting up on the dais. Does he have a conflict? It's a pretty obvious example. That absolutely is a conflict of interest. He has a contractual interest in the property that is part of the development proposal. So it's not okay for him to cast a vote on that. That undermines his ability to think in the public interest and keep the public interest and those zoning factors in mind. Because no matter how hard he tries, he's going to have that dollar value stuck in the back of his head that he wants to get for selling the property. That's a clear conflict of interest. Those situations, if they do come up, nine times out of 10, probably more than nine times out of 10, that Commissioner's going to recuse himself. Those are pretty obvious. There are other situations which fall into more of a gray area. So same example, but say there's no zoning contingency involved in the contract. Say the luxury dealer just buys the property outright and then comes back for approval a year or 18 months later. And that proposal comes before the Plan Commission, and that Commissioner, who 18 months ago sold the property to the car dealer sitting up there. There's an open question as to whether or not it's okay for him to vote on it. In a lot of states, it's okay. There's not a contractual interest, so there's not a clear conflict of interest. That's the legal answer and the legal analysis based on the statute. But as a commissioner, you also have to keep in mind the optics and the appearance of impropriety. How would it look if a resident or the paper found out that that Commissioner sold the property and then during the meeting was a vocal advocate for the development, and it ultimately went through and got approved? So there's a public perception component of it, too. And just because there's not a legal conflict of interest, it's a good idea for commissioners to keep the public perception in mind, and if you think there's an issue, you can always recuse yourself. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that.
What about, there are times where people might think there's a conflict of interest, but there really isn't. So if the church you're part of is coming for a special use before you, or your country club comes before the commission, or if there's a rezoning for an entire zoning district in the downtown, and you happen to own a property in the downtown, you're connected to it, but are those necessarily a conflict of interest?
Not necessarily. It's, you really have to take a closer look. And this is where, this is where the public and sometimes, you know, the media that's reporting on it can get it wrong. You end up with sensationalized headlines of, you know, "Commissioner on the take. He's voting for his own self-interest." You really need to look at the specific facts and circumstances. Like, an example that comes up frequently, say, you know, Apple. Everybody loves Apple. An Apple store is coming to town. And, Michael, you're a commissioner and you own Apple stock. And you know what? You voted to support that Apple store. That's not necessarily a conflict. Now, if you own 10% of Apple's stock, that probably would be a conflict, because that's...
Don't.
I'm sorry to hear that. That would be pretty close to a controlling interest. But most people don't own 10% of Apple's stock. They own some shares, and they have it, you know, set aside for retirement or what have you. So the facts are important, and the analysis is important. And, you know, it never hurts, too, in these situations, to state on the record, "Listen, I'm a parishioner of this church, but I'm not involved in the business management or affairs of this church, and I feel comfortable voting on it." And you might catch some flak from some people, the public, but a lot of them are going to appreciate that you've been upfront, and you've explained your relationship, and explained that there's no more palace intrigue going on here.
And I'll go back to the advice you gave with the last question we had about ethics. Is if there's a question about a conflict of interest, contact your staff, contact your corporation counsel.
Always, always. And that's another really good point. I know a lot of communities don't have corporation counsel at the meetings, but they certainly can help, and this is one of the situations they can. There are legal issues that will come up that will inevitably be outside of the chairman or the commission's comfort zone. And having legal counsel there can really help you navigate those waters in the most sensitive of situation, a meeting that's televised or in front of a bunch of your neighbors and friends.
So one more thing about the commissioners that's got to be important, because I think it's Latin, this idea of ex parte communication, or talking to people outside of the meeting. Why is that an issue and what should be avoided there?
The whole purpose of the Plan Commission and the public meeting process is to have these deliberations in the public. There's nothing to hide here. Everything's upfront. The decision, the recommendation that the Plan Commission makes is based only on the testimony and evidence presented at the hearing. So there's no hide the ball. Everything that you need to see is in front of you. Ex parte communications are when an applicant or an interested party lobbies a Plan Commissioner or City Councilman behind the scenes. So they invite you out for dinner. They show up at your door and say, "Hey, I bought you a cup of coffee. Let's sit down and talk." Now, this is going to happen. You're a public official. A lot of these meetings are televised on TV in some communities. People are going to understand that you're serving your community, and that's a great thing. But as a result of them being aware of your service, they're going to go to you if they think there's an issue that you can help with. You're not going to go run and hide in the bushes. Or if you see Joe, your neighbor, coming down the street, you don't run across the street to avoid him. It's not realistic. But the best advice is, you want to keep all of these discussions in the public. So if someone comes up to you and says, "Hey, I really want to talk to you about this development proposal," say, "Thanks, you know, I really appreciate it, but, you know, as a Plan Commissioner, we're supposed to hold these hearings. Please come to the hearing. We'd love to hear what you have to say. That's the best way to make a difference, and your input really matters."
If you can't make it, send a letter perhaps, or an email to staff.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And staff is, you bring up another good point with staff. Come to the meeting, or, you know, you can also direct folks to staff. Say, "Hey, if you have input about the proposal, staff's really managing this. They're doing the whole, you know, the public input prior to the meeting. So, you know, call Sally, the planner, or send an email to this email address and give them your thoughts." Those thoughts will be shared with the commission. Those thoughts will be shared with the City Council. Your voice will be heard. It just provides structure around the communication process, and it also provides a barrier protecting the commission from, you know, allegations that there's something nefarious going on.
Goes back to what you said before about the optics. It doesn't look like there's something going on. Everything's out front.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, you know, one last thought on this, too. If you do happen to have a conversation with someone, and, you know, it's a friend, and these conversations can happen. You start on one topic and you shift to another, and he brings up a relevant point about a development proposal that's before the commission. Disclose it during the public hearing. Say, "Hey, you know what? On Sunday, I had Joe over. We were watching the Bears game, and he brought up a point on this that I think's relevant, and I want to share it with the public." It tells them that the conversation happened. It puts it on the record. It shows that there's nothing to hide. So there are options to deal with it, other than finding a bush to jump into.
And I think that's great advice, because I think a lot of times commissioners are uncomfortable with this idea of disclosure, letting people know what happened. But, you know, as we used to warn people, you don't want Joe to come and stand at the podium and go, "Hey, when I was talking to Commissioner Greg about this the other day, he thought it was a fine idea." So it really, there's, again, it's another one of these ways that the structure of the system really helps the commissioner, protects the commissioners. They do their job.
That's exactly right. It's being called out at a public hearing for a private conversation is definitely a red face moment.
Absolutely. All right, well, Greg, thank you for sharing your insights on the legal aspects of the commission function, and we thank you for your time.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Hello, and welcome to Plan Commissioner Training. I'm David Silverman. I'm a partner at Ansel Lincoln Chicago. In a prior life, before becoming an attorney, I was a practicing planner. I'm going to be going over various legal issues that you, as Plan Commissioners, need to concern yourselves with. And whether you're seasoned or whether you're new to a Plan Commission, we hope that you find this material helpful as you proceed with serving your communities in the very important role of being Plan Commissioner. So it's important to understand that a lot of what you do is shaped by state laws. With that, we'll turn to some procedural requirements, which includes, most importantly, the Open Meetings Act of your state. These are also known as Sunshine Laws, and sometimes they are called Sunshine Laws, and they're designed to ensure that government operates publicly, that deals aren't being made in the background, outside of the public purview. And again, because you operate in the context of public hearings, where you're weighing evidence, it's very important that you're very aware of your open meeting, your state's open meeting requirements. Certainly, staff will be, but you, as an appointed governmental official, also have a responsibility to have an awareness at a minimum of what your state's open meetings requirements are. In our state of Illinois, governmental officials, including Plan Commissioners, zoning board members, and the like, they all have to do Open Meetings Act training. It's an online program. It doesn't take a lot, but it is a requirement, assuming a position in your government, your local governmental structure. So, you know, why do we have these? Well, again, making sure that there's no backward dealing, of course, being able to hold government accountable, ensuring that the public actually has access to the public hearing that's being held. And Open Meetings sits equal with due process. And we're not going to get into a lot about due process, but suffice it to say, the constitutional considerations of providing process to everyone who's participating in your public hearing is a necessary requirement for fairness. And the Open Meetings Act sets the stage for that by requiring notice. Perhaps it's a published notice in a newspaper, or a mail notice to neighbors within a certain distance of the subject property. Whatever the case may be, you should be aware of those requirements. And why they exist is to ensure that the public knows what government is doing, when it's doing it, and how they, members of the public with concerns, can participate in the process. And this, of course, has been complicated to some extent over the course of the last year because of the pandemic, with communities having to adjust to remote meetings. It certainly has presented challenges for a lot of our communities. And in contentious public hearings, it's not always easy to manage it. But the key thing is to make sure that you are giving the public as much ability to meaningfully participate in the process as possible. And that includes perhaps putting all of the ways you can participate, or get your testimony in if a member of the public doesn't want to participate, but could at least provide written comment. As much as you can do to ensure that that's happening, you're usually going to keep yourself on a good footing. And like, what I like to tell people when we're talking about these types of things is, the Open Meetings Act sets the bare minimum standards for due process. And your process should be structured in a way, again, to make sure that people have meaningful opportunity to participate, but it doesn't have to be a perfect process. And that's where a lot of communities can get tripped up in thinking that they need to provide some type of perfect process. You don't, but you have to provide a meaningful opportunity to participate. Other things that the Open Meetings Act will define is, well, what's a quorum? And at least in our state, a quorum is a majority, a quorum, if you have seven members, four is a quorum. A majority of a quorum, three, is a meeting in our state. That could vary from state to state. You should be aware of that. And the reason why you should be aware of that is, when you and your fellow commissioners get together and you start talking about a matter of public business, you could conceivably be violating the Open Meetings Act. So you do need to be aware of what your state requires for a meeting. And if three of you get together in Illinois, and you start talking about a matter of public business without properly noticing it up, giving the public an opportunity to participate in a discussion with you, you could be fighting yourself in some hot water. So you should be aware of these things. And also, this comes into play, too, and it's something we've been very aware of for several years, with technology, internet chat rooms, texting, whatever. Because similarly, many states have defined public officials who are communicating electronically on a matter of public business in real time. So they're trading texts or whatever, or even emails, email exchanges. They are violating the Open Meetings Act if no one else knows about that. And that's, you can get into a lot of trouble with that, too. So you need to be aware of those rules for your state. It's worth noting that if you do feel like you need to send some type of electronic communication ahead of a public hearing, you know, either a new one or a continued one, something occurs to you about the application or whatever, send your communication to staff with a note that basically, and don't copy anyone else, just send it to staff, and say, "Hey, look, this came up at the public hearing, or I anticipate this coming up at the public hearing. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of it." Let staff then deal with managing how that communication gets to your fellow commissioners. This way, you don't inadvertently create the opportunity for what could become a real-time email, perhaps text exchange, that then goes into a meeting. So that's a very good way to manage yourself and a very good way to avoid the problem of... of violating your Open Meetings Act. Okay. Oh, and yes, optically, it's important to remember too, that oftentimes you're on camera and the public is watching. And if you're on the dais texting, it's a bad luck. And it could raise questions about what you're actually texting about. So even if you have to tell your significant other something about what's going on at the house or with the kids or whatever the case may be, make sure you wait maybe in between, but don't do it like up there where the public can see you texting because it's going to immediately open up a question as to what exactly you're doing there. So avoid that at all costs. It's a bad look. Okay, conflicts of interest. This is another one, and this is often misunderstood. In my experience, plan commissioners tend to find conflicts of interest when there really are conflicts of interest. What I mean by that is, and this is a credit to plan commissioners for those who think like this, they're so diligent with the idea that they want to avoid any appearance of impropriety or being compromised somehow, or having too much of an interest in a matter, that they'll either abstain in their vote or recuse themselves entirely from the conversation because they believe they have a conflict of interest because perhaps the applicant is a brother-in-law or a friend, or whatever the case may be. In reality, the only time a conflict of interest is really going to become an issue is if you have some financial stake in the property, in the project, or with the applicant in the event that the applicant's a corporation. But even that one is kind of limited because you have to own such a stake in a company to rise to a level that actually matters. So if you're talking about Facebook and you own one billionth of a percent of Facebook, you don't really have a conflict of interest. If you suddenly are one of those people who are lucky enough to own five, 10% of Facebook, then you're probably approaching a problematic situation where there's a conflict of interest. But the key thing to remember about conflicts of interest is there's a pecuniary interest by you in the project, in the property, in the applicant. And in that case, you definitely should recuse yourself. And when we say recuse, you should explain publicly why you'd have to recuse yourself and then you should leave the dais. You might leave the room for as long as that public hearing is going on, on that matter, where you actually do have a conflict of interest. If there's another item on the agenda after that, you can come back on. You can come back into the meeting and be counted in the attendance for the plan commission at that point, and then you can participate normally again. But if there's ever any questions, as with anything, ask staff. If staff feels they need to go to the attorney, they can talk to the attorney on your behalf, or they may ask you to talk to the attorney. So just use the resources available to you in your community. You know, nine times out of 10, you probably don't have a real conflict of interest. Okay, that brings us to one final thing that we want to talk about today, and that is ex parte communications. And I touched on it a little bit a few minutes ago, but it is important, again, to emphasize the point that when you're in an active public hearing process, everything you do as a plan commissioner is done publicly. There's a reason why we're having a public hearing. And doing business outside the context of the public hearing obviously violates the spirit and intent of what we're trying to do here and to operate publicly, operate in the open, give everyone an equal opportunity to participate meaningfully in the process. So when you are out and about in your community, chances are you're going to run into neighbors, friends who may very well know that you serve on the plan commission. And they may want to talk to you about the items on the agenda. What you should do is avoid any long conversation and encourage those people to attend. I mean, one thing that is a struggle everywhere is getting people to participate in these processes that are set up for their benefit. And that's what you need to tell them. And that's a responsible way for you as a commissioner to operate, encouraging your own neighbors to participate in the process that is available to them so that they can be heard. And if they say, well, you know, I don't really like going into public settings like that. They make me nervous, then you can also encourage them to provide written comments. But you should also tell them, like, I'm not trying to be rude, but it is really inappropriate for me to have this conversation with you right now. I'd rather, much rather you come and listen to the testimony that's being offered by the applicant because maybe you might have a misunderstanding about the project. Or you will have an opportunity to specifically ask questions pertaining to the application of those matters that concern me most on it. That is a very good way to deal with that. Similarly, you may have the occasion with a very aggressive, opportunistic, whatever the word is you might want to use, applicant, who really wants to talk to you about his or her project. That is a definite, absolute do not do. Obviously, you can take a firmer position with an applicant. They are overly interested, of course, in their own project. And if you're seen talking to them out in the open, outside the context of the public hearing, it could very well raise questions that become problematic for you down the road. So similarly with your friend, your neighbors, who you could take probably a lighter touch with, who aren't the actual applicant, but with the applicant, you need to be firm and say, look, can't have this conversation right now. You need to save this for the public hearing. If you really have a burning issue, you can certainly take it to staff, but I can't be part of this conversation. And you need to remove yourself as quickly as possible. Other things that might come up, an applicant might want to show you the property. Well, this kind of ties into open meetings issues because they might want the whole commission to go on a field trip to see either the property or maybe a similar project in a neighboring town that they did because they're so happy with it and they think the community will be happy with it. They kind of want to show it off. It's very normal. It's part of the sales pitch that developers will do for a time hanging on the complexity of the project. In that instance, the Open Meetings Act is triggered. And again, you have to be aware of what actually is defined as a meeting in your state. But if it's anything like Illinois, if three of you get together and go on a bus trip to a neighboring town to see a project, or even just across town to see the property and get a better understanding of the lay of land from the developer, that is a meeting. And you need to make sure that you're following the rules of public hearings with notice requirements and all the rest. And developers are aware of this. More sophisticated developers will definitely be aware of this. But most developers are aware that there is a process that they have to go through to make sure that the public's business is being done publicly. And they willingly participate in it, of course, by filing an application in the first place and knowing that they're going to have to provide evidence and testimony in a public hearing. But that is also a situation where if you independently, as a single plan commissioner, or maybe just one other plan commissioner, said, hey, I want to go check out the property. Why don't you come with me? It may be that the property owner's there, and it may be that they want to talk to you about the project. You need to avoid that and make sure that that does not happen. And if it does happen, you need to leave quickly. So those are some of the things that we wanted to talk about with you. And as always, if you have questions on any of these things that we've discussed today, make sure you talk to your local attorney about them. And thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Can we please? Any comments? Questions? I'm having a hard time hearing, but yeah, the modulation was a little bit off. But anyway, yeah, I found some stuff. It was good. Okay.
And so I have it on my list to email all of you, the modules, you know, download them and.
I still would like it at some point for Patrick Bracken, because he's so good at, you know, explaining things for the rest of the group and even for myself to refresh, is to just give an overview of comprehensive plan, how it ties into the codes, land development regulations, the ordinances, whatever, and just give an overall view because I think that would be very helpful for everybody. Yeah, that was the indication before that they would like to hear that. So I think that would be good going forward. Okay. I don't have anything to add as far as comments other than that. I guess I've seen several of you attending the council meetings, so you're fully aware of how hard they're working and, you know.
I do have a few things.
I would love, yeah.
I kind of knows that I know people in Ocala. And so I called Rob. He's the transportation and planning organization contact. Now, and he is for, this is.
Can you speak into the mic?
This is in reference to the confusion that people are having when the road thing is going to happen and when the slip is going to be gone, that right turn slip. He informed me that the right turn slip and island at Penn and Williams will not be taken out until the repaving of 41, starting in August 2025.
Wow.
Year and a half. The repaving will start at Citrus County Line at 110 Street and end at 40. East Penn will have the sidewalks widened to accommodate bike paths along with adding a bike path at the bridge. There will be no parking along East Penn at all. No date on start date or completion.
On either side.
On either side. That's going to be a mess. Maybe they will take down the individual mailboxes and go with cluster boxes at that point. I was thinking about that. So maybe that's one good thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I also spoke with Rob about the dangerous left turn lane traffic coming from the south on 41, turning into Robinson Post Office. Also turning in traffic coming from the north, turning and going into O'Reilly's and what will be that big, huge car wash. And I'm talking that it's, right now, it's dangerous as it is. And when we add that traffic from the car wash, it's going to be really bad. And he said, he said he would order a review of the area for possible turn lights to be installed. Okay, our fingers crossed on that one.
Yes.
We still have not received, oh, that was the last one. We still haven't received any updates on code violations on who has been recently cited and any resolution on ones that have been cited. I know that, was it a couple of meetings ago or last meeting where we asked for that to happen? And they said that it, that they would get with Chad and Chad would do that. So I don't know if the communication just didn't get to Chad or whatever. But it would really help us to know, especially the beautification people and everybody, to know what's, you know, what's in process, not right now. What should we work on? Should we work on this? Should we work on that? I don't know. Anyway, so if we could, you know, Chad is an extremely nice man. I just, I think that he's just not been informed to give us that information. And my last one was how can we move forward to hopefully extend the CRA money to Williams and Penn area, especially down Williams? We had talked about that before. What steps can we take to make this happen? When Georgina was here, I'm sorry. When Georgina was here, we were talking, they were saying that they had a whole bunch of CRA money that was to be used. And we were really trying to get these people to use CRA money. And then I don't know who it was, but was asked to, from Georgina, if could we expand that to go down Williams? And she said it was a very good idea. And then she left before all that got rolling. So I don't know who to, how do we make this happen? Because if we could just get it down Williams, you know, we don't have to go down Penn anymore because those, it's pretty well, you know, nice. But down Williams, folks like the Buckhorn Sanon, if he had $5,000, he would do that. He would paint that building and get it fixed up. Same thing with probably with the building that's on Williams and Penn, that law building, that's a very law building. You know, if they knew that they were getting their money back, then they would, they would do that. Then the carpet company, thank goodness, that's, that's looking better. The carpet sign is gone, and I think they're getting ready to repaint that. So if we could just get somehow, and that's what I'm saying. I don't know who to contact, how to contact to get this CRA money. I mean, we have a lot of it from what I understand, and it's just sitting there. And these buildings could be refurbished, especially even the Mason Building. You know, they had to stop because they didn't have enough money to do anything. So now it's just in the midst of nothingness, you know? We've got framed in windows and nothing, nothing else has happened now because they don't have to do it. But if they knew, you know, that they had $5,000, that they could possibly, you know, borrow the money or whatever and fix it up. So that, that's another thing that was, you know, I don't know who to ask. I did ask Melissa.
Mandy?
Michelle, sorry. And she said that she had talked to Mandy and acknowledged that CRA money was just for the historical district. But I know that it had been discussed, maybe it was that far to her. I just, I don't know what to do. I just feel like we're just.
I think historic district, primary district stands far to them just before the main district.
That's what Georgina said. If we want to revive this town and we know that, why can't we excel there? And it's just sitting there and we're, it's stuck and the buildings are stuck because they don't have money to fix them. And it's like, there's a solution here, but I don't know how to get it.
Well, I think the issue is typically in the past, and when we even had a community development director, they had staff that could help drive that. Now we don't. I mean, you've got two plates full.
Yeah. So where does it? And we just don't know how to get it done, but it needs.
So maybe we need to advocate for more staff.
You just need to have that, you know, what can we do?
Any suggestions, Kelly?
So I have it on my list for next agenda topics along with the other two items. And I'll figure out in the meantime, what we need to do to make that happen because that's something, it's been brought up to me several times as well. And I think it's a great idea. So before our next meeting, there may be some progress on that. If I can get to it, I am below again.
We are very.
Yeah.
Believe me, I know.
Yeah, I will try.
Kelly, real quickly, I've got a seven to five meeting, so I have, yeah, very quickly. But is there any plan right now to hire a full-time community development director? Or is it working so well with the Southside Planning Agency that things seem to be going well?
So the plan is to rewrite the job description. Keep the planning agency, rewrite the manager position to be a supervisor position so that there is not a need for a requirement of that planning education.
Okay.
And then hopefully that will, you know, enable more applicants to apply when it's posted. And of course, she has to fill the planning assistant position too.
Right. Okay.
I think that's all I had.
No, I think that's wonderful and I commend you for taking the time to do all.
One second, I wanted to touch on Kathy's wonderful list that she had before that we've not been able to really talk about. Went to a lot of trouble making this list about mailboxes and all that. And we haven't been able to touch on that, so maybe that's.
Yeah.
I know, you know, I went down, I saw the big garbage, garbage container in front of another one. So, you know, something needs to be done. And I was right reading through this and said, this is such a wonderful list that needs to be done.
Discussing right now, they really don't know when they'll start widening the sidewalks or really doing.
No, I asked him, I said, is it going to be a year and a half? He said, no, they are working on that right now. I saw them at the bridge. And so they are working on widening that and they're already taking measurements. They know what to do. They've already got that. So that's going to be started. The other part, the widening of the repaving, taking out that.
No, it's just, if you're from my little place, it's very, very dangerous, ingress and egress. And we have a lot of.
No, it's just, if you're from my little place, it's very, very dangerous, ingress and egress, and we have a lot of um. You know, very elderly clients come in and out there, and I just cringe every time. It's an accident waiting to happen. And we've been so much there on East Penn.
Well, I did, I did hear when we were in the, uh, the, uh, one of the meetings where uh.
Yes.
He said, he said, give it two weeks because he has a plan and it's going to be planned in motion, please. So that's like, oh, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go get it done.
That's another good uh suggestion.
I really um hope, I really had hoped that um when, if the council will adopt the money. To be budgeted to look at our comprehensive plan, that some of these things will be solved. Um, and I think as a planning council, we should advocate for that to happen. Because I think once we have a plan, revised plan, a lot of things will happen. I think they're planning to do it, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, they're, they're planning to do.
It's proposed. It's in the budget.
Uh huh.
Don't.
Okay.
Okay.
If I have to be there, be careful.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brenda.
Don't speak.
Thank you.
But I just um wondered if it would be. Good for us as a group to advocate to them formally that they. Um. Budget the money for a comprehensive plan. I know Georgina felt like that would be a good essential.
Something that at that meeting that they said that that, that was budgeted, that would be happening in the next budget that is already budgeted for that. Might have been dreaming, maybe I am.
I mean, we're in next year's budget right now, so the budget that begins October first, that's what they're under, that's what they are, the council is reviewing.
Budget that.
Yes, yeah. And I have not heard um remarks that would indicate that they're wavering on that. Um, I think it's very clear, and it's been clear for years that we have some issues, but. More in the last couple of years, there's been a lot more issues and discrepancies brought to light, so.
What, twenty fourteen is the last one?
Twenty sixteen, last conference.
Yeah. But I just, um, the CRA area, um, that doesn't include the back corn bar and the Masonic Lodge, right?
When the Tiff, just, when the Tiff District was set up, when this happened, that the CRA was developed with the.
Uh huh.
There were very specific areas that were. Put into the Tiff District so that any increase in the taxation. Went directly to the city of Don Ellen and did not go to the county first, and we get a part of it. And it was very specific about what you could use that money for and where you could use it. And they did extend that at one time. I don't remember what it was, but it is very um. Specific about what you can use for and where. You don't just use it anywhere you want to.
Yeah, that's what we knew it.
It was just, you know. It's a legal, it was a legal thing.
Yeah.
No, it's not just the historic district. It goes to the, I'm, you know, where East Penn is in it, all the way down to East Penn.
If you look at the screens, I have the historic district layer selected.
East Penn is on it.
Yeah, that's a CRA area.
Everything, hold on. So this is just historic district, and then over here, this is available to anybody on our website. If we take off the historic district layer. And select community redevelopment area. Yeah, everything is shaded in yellow, so that's a huge portion of the city.
Almost all of it.
Yeah, so it really does include the back corn bar and the, yeah.
It does.
It's Georgina that had wanted to keep it only in the, the facade improvement grant only to the historic district. But actually, the CRA money can be used for anything in the CRA district, correct, Kelly?
That's correct. And I, what I need to do is look to see if there had to be a resolution to say, oh, we're only, or. Some kind of amendment with CRA itself that said, hey, we're limiting this now only to the historic district. I need to make sure that no further action has to be made le, on a, from a legal standpoint. To be able to expand to the entire CRA district.
Well, the, my buildings are in the CRA, in the Tiff District. So I know that any increases in my taxes have gone directly into CRA fund.
Uh huh, right.
And that's East Penn. I'm on East Penn.
Yeah.
So we know that we are included in that.
Uh huh.
Where, so that's not, that's not an issue. When it was set up, it was set up that way.
Right.
So we, we, we just have to wait for a yes.
You have to wait for me to do all my homework.
I thought, I was under the impression that we could go ahead and, and get the facade improvement grant for anything in the CRA district. Because maybe there hadn't been a specific resolution.
Uh huh.
Um, but I went to the Citrus Grill and the Shed Shop to say, would you like to have, would you be interested in applying for this grant?
We did have a facade grant application that a couple of our banks were involved with.
Yeah.
Many years ago, and nobody was lying for it.
Yeah, because they don't know it exists. A lot of them, yeah. Yeah, that's why we should make, make it, make, really write an article in the newspaper.
You have to make sure, you have to.
Yeah, we have to.
Make sure that.
Yeah.
We know.
Yeah.
Yes. And it might not be a bad idea to talk to Patrick about that.
Yeah. Well, we just have a CRA meeting.
Well, but it, it, it is a legal.
Yeah, we have to look back and find out if they made that a resolution when Georgina was here. Because she proposed to just keep it in the historic business.
She, she asked me, she's, no, we need to expand it. I mean, I really had that conversation.
Yeah, sure.
If our tax money goes into it, if our specific tax money goes into it, I don't think we can be excluded from it. I mean.
I'm not even sure if it was hold.
She was just trying, she was trying to concentrate the money for the biggest impact.
Well, that's true.
But.
Still have to.
Yeah.
Buddy who's in the Tiff District.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we need it. We need it because we've got, the money is intended for that.
If that's just going to go, eventually it's going to go through magistrates and da, 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 until, you know, we have to take it and, and razz it. And that will be a change.
Yeah.
Would we be wanting to ask Chad to come to the next planning meeting and just give us an update on the?
We can. I mean, I have access to the code enforcement log. I just. Now that I'm not really helping him in depth with that, I just want to make sure I have the most recent updates. That it's been updated and everything's good before I show it to you.
Right. Okay.
Great. That was good. That's really good. And I'm excited about that.
Yeah.
You're not excited about having more work to do.
I know, I'm like, how do I clone myself?
And twenty people, actually, you probably need.
Sam, the three hands have shut out the rooster.
Would you make some comments?
No, we are not. I need somebody to motion for an adjournment.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second?
A second.
Meeting.
Meeting adjourned at six fifty-seven. July eighteen.
Now, hold on just a moment. Okay, now we're free.